Okay, we will let everybody in.
Everybody should be in, and this is a reminder, we haven't been doing the pledge on the Zoom calls just when we're in person. But this was made from when we were in person.
Right, yeah, we have no flags on the, I'll pass that. Okay, this meeting of Livingston City Commission is called to order. May I have roll call, please?
Vice Chair Schwartz.
Here, President.
President.
Maybe.
Here.
Commissioner News.
Here.
And Chair Hopeless is excused.
And since we're on Zoom, we'll dispense with the moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. And we'll move forward to public comment. Please be reminded that public comment is limited to things that the commission has scope over. And I'm limited to any items that hold your comments for public discussion on items that are on the agenda further down. This moment open for public comment, any public comment? If you can help me, Mike, if I'm looking for hands and stuff, I don't know.
Do not see any public comment at this time.
I don't either, so. Any public comment? Going once. Okay, no public comment. We'll move on to consent items. Do I have a motion to approve consent items or any that would like to be polled?
I'll make a motion, we approve consent items A through C.
Second.
Have motion by Newt's and a second by maybe. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Schwartz.
For?
Commissioner Freeman. Commissioner Maybe.
Or.
Commissioner News.
For.
Motion carries. Tonight, we have no proclamations. We have one public, scheduled public comment, Matthew Menard, with the planning board options for zoning the EJT. Mr. Cardo, so or should I just go to Matthew?
We'll just go straight to Matthew on this one.
All right, Matthew, thanks.
I'm not sure who's in charge of controlling the Zoom, but can someone let me share my screen just so I can pop the presentation up for you here? So basically, this is in response to staff bringing you a request a few weeks back, requesting that you allow the city manager to sign into local agreement with the county, or at least pursue that with the county to set up a city-county planning board. At that time, you all expressed that you wanted to see what the options are for planning boards and zoning extraterritorial jurisdictions. So I have a very brief PowerPoint that is very wordy and not very exciting, so I'll try to get through it pretty quickly here on sort of what those options are and sort of what the state laws around it. So first slide, basically, the state law that authorizes us to zone the area around the city. As we are a city of the second class, we are allowed to zone up to two miles around the city as long as the county has not adopted zoning or subdivision regulations in that area. The county has adopted subdivision regulations in the area, so we are not allowed to do that. We wouldn't be allowed to do that anyway under the seventy-six-two-three-twelve at the bottom there. I should also know that the county does have two areas of zoning within the ETJ, a three-quarter mile wide strip on each side of the central line of eighty-nine, which specifically does not allow billboards. And there is one small area of zoning up by Oakdale Road as well. So we wouldn't be able to zone those areas unless the county were to rescind that zoning. But otherwise, there is no zoning in ETJ, which state statute gives us the authority to to zone in that area, under the condition that we have a growth policy or an amendment plan for that area, which we do, which is appendix A of our growth policy that was adopted this year. And the other requirement is that it's seventy-six-two-three-ten. Two that you can see down there is the third highlighted part is that we must either set up a city-county planning board or expand our city planning board. So those are basically the two options to be able to zone at this point. We've hit the growth policy markers. We've got that covered. But we would need to set up one of these two planning boards. So they are composed differently. The city-county planning board is comprised of four members appointed by the city and four members appointed by the county, as well as one member that is on the Board of Supervisors of the Conservation District. So essentially, the city-county planning board would be split down the middle between county and city residents or members. And all of those members under state law do have to be freeholders. I do want to bring that out just because we've had quite a few discussions about that lately. So there is no option like we did with the city planning board to expand that to include non-freeholders. Right now, under state law, a city-county planning board must be filled entirely with freeholders. And this planning board would have jurisdiction solely over the city area and then the area, the extraterritorial jurisdiction area, would not have jurisdiction over the rest of the county. The current county planning board would have jurisdiction over that area. The makeup of the expanded city planning board is essentially the way it is now, but we also need to expand that to include two members on the planning board that are, that live within that incorporated area, so the extraterritorial jurisdiction. So basically, it's a city planning board with representation of the two people in the ETJ. Essentially, both, the requirement for that is to make sure that there is representation from the area that we are going to regulate on any planning board that we form. So there is a formation process for a city-county planning board. Again, it's that interlocal agreement that we brought to you at the last meeting to potentially have the city manager pursue that. And there's some criteria with that that you don't need to worry about too much, that we would make sure would happen with any any interlocal agreements. The process for the city planning board is essentially the same process you just undertook to expand the planning board to include non-freeholders. You'd have to go through that same process, but to specify that those members live in the extraterritorial jurisdiction and generally would be freeholders from that area. So here's just a brief rundown of the difference between those two boards. Again, expanded city planning board is eight members appointed by the city and then one member appointed by the county. Basically, the same setup we have now with two, the two extra people can be expanded by unilateral action of the city. And what I mean by that is we don't need the county to participate in that expansion. It can't act as a zoning commission, which the city-county planning board can, which is the biggest distinction between the two, other than the membership, and would not require the dissolution of the existing planning board. And again, the city-county planning board is four members from the city, four members from the, appointed by the county, one conservation district member. It does require an interlocal agreement with the county, so we have to work with the county on the formation of this board. It can act as a zoning commission, so it can make recommendations on zoning actions, which the expanded city planning board wouldn't be able to do. All the members do have to be freeholders, unlike a city planning board as we have now, and it would require dissolution of the existing planning board. So they are different in their effect and how they are taken into effect and their membership. And that's all I really have. Wanted to keep it short today. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. And if you do have legal questions about state statutes, those should be addressed to Courtney.
Thank you, Matthew. I don't plan to open this up to public comment at this time. Any clarifying questions from the commissioners at this moment?
This is Melissa, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, Matthew, is it, is your slide with the eight members, is that including the two non-freeholders that we currently have? No?
No, so currently, basically, that would be the minimum number for the expanded planning board would be nine members. Right now, the city is, has expanded our current planning board to nine, so if we were to keep the, all the existing members and then add the two from the ETJ, it would be eleven members. It would be at the city commission's discretion if they wanted to do that or not.
Thank you. That's the only question I had.
Thanks, Melissa. I have just one question, Matthew, just clarification on number five under city-county planning board. Does that mean dissolution of our existing city planning board or the current city-county planning board?
Be the current city planning board. So essentially, the city-county planning board would replace the existing city planning board, so we didn't have overlapping jurisdictional areas for.
Right, okay, that's all I had. Any other commissioners? All right, thank you, Matthew. Okay, we have one scheduled public hearing. Resolution number five zero zero three, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one by making appropriation adjustments in the amount of three hundred ninety-eight thousand one hundred sixty dollars and revenue adjustments in the amount of three hundred ninety thousand dollars and three hundred ninety thousand four hundred forty-five dollars. Mr. Cardis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a part of the, I would say, the execution of what we were looking for to improve some of our budgeting processes. Usually, in past years, we've only brought you a budget amendment at the end of the year to kind of wrap up the entire year. So this is more of a quarterly look at where we are so far in FY twenty-two, what has come in that we didn't expect and what we spent that we didn't expect. And I will pass it over to Paige to explain exactly what we're doing.
Hi, good evening. This is actually the FY twenty-one budget amendment. Sorry, Mike, it's not FY twenty-two, just finalizing the FY twenty-one budget for items that the commission had discussed and authorized expenditures for in previous commission meetings. And I will let you guys ask any specific questions you might have. Quentin, you're on mute.
Before I open a public comment, any clarifying questions from the commission? All right. Open a public comment on resolution number five zero zero three and a public comment. All right, if I'm not mistaken, I see no hands up for public comment. Public comment is closed. Commissioner comments on resolution five zero zero three? All right. So I have a motion on resolution five zero zero three.
I move we accept resolution number five zero zero three.
You're on mute, Mel. I can read lips pretty good, but.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by maybe and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please. For?
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Maybe.
For.
Commissioner News.
For.
Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is ordinance number three zero two four. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, of its intent intent to amend city ordinance number two zero four one, two zero four nine, two zero five five, and two zero nine eight, as codified by chapter nine, section two forty-two of the Livingston Municipal Code, entitled Traffic and Vehicles, by establishing a loading, unloading zone for Dorothy's daycare at nine oh five West Clark Street and establishing a penalty for violations thereof. Mr. Cardis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is just establishing a loading and unloading zone for Dorothy's daycare, which is at nine oh five West Clark Street. It's adjacent to the United Methodist Church there. So this will be like all the other loading and unloading zones in the city. You can see that this, in section one, there's currently one at Counterpoint as well. This is just due to the amount of traffic that most daycares get for either drop off and/or pickup in the afternoons. So there's just a safety measure for as they load it.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, I'll open it up for a public comment on ordinance three zero two four. Any public comment? Okay, no public comment. Commissioner comments?
I have a question.
Commissioner News.
So the last time we did this for a daycare, we had certain hours for loading and unloading, and I wonder if that's an option here, too. Just, I'm thinking if it's permanently a loading spot, it doesn't allow residents in the neighborhood to park where people coming to that church on Sunday, when neighborhoods tend to fill up with cars on Sunday morning. So I wonder if there's any option to allow parking there for the, for anyone when it's not the loading, unloading times for the preschool or for the daycare, excuse me.
Mr. Cardis?
I think that is a possibility. I was just looking at the letter to see what they asked for. I don't think they asked us for certain hours. We could restrict it to Monday through Friday. I don't think the daycare is open on the, on the weekends, which would take care of the parking spaces for the church. Though I think this space may currently be marked as no parking, so I'm not sure we're taking up any parking spaces. Can you flip to the picture and show them? Page forty-nine. So you see the area we're looking at, I think, is already marked, no parking for the church. I think they just coordinated with the church to turn that from no parking into a loading zone.
Okay, thanks. I guess my preference, Vice Chair Schwartz, would be that we stay consistent with what we did for the other daycare.
And do you remember what that was, Melissa? Was that just Monday through Friday?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I remember Shannon was involved in coordinating. He shared at that meeting some specific hours so that it would still be open to residents and other people in the neighborhood when the daycare wasn't in need. I'm sure, probably knows.
Yeah, it would be helpful to have a nine to five, but what do we do for like the Livingston Veterinary Hospital that we put as loading zone in? Is that a twenty-four-seven thing, Mike? Do you remember?
I think it is. I think the only one that's not twenty-four-seven is the daycare that we did last time, and I think we made that different because it was on Main Street. And so we wanted to save Main Street parking more so than off downtown. Because I know Counterpoint, I don't believe, has a, a time restriction on it for their loading and unloading. I don't think the veterinary office has a restriction on it for loading and unloading. I'm not positive there's not another loading zone in town that has restrictions, but I think, I think the daycare is the only one that we put time restrictions on because it was on Main Street.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's that's kind of what I recall now. Yeah, as long as, I think that was the exception to the rule, so being consistent would be to keep it a loading zone twenty, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. Which I'm, I'm comfortable with. At this point, any other commissioner comments regarding that? And entertain a motion for ordinance three zero two four.
I make a motion that we pass three zero two four.
I want to make a motion to amend.
Let's see, how do we do that, Michael? You take the amendment first, the amended motion?
Yeah, we'd need to get a second first, and then if it receives a second, then you would vote on that one. If it doesn't, then it would die and you go back to the original, and you still need a second on the original as well.
Okay, do I have a a second on the amended motion?
Second.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I should ask, what's the amendment?
I want to make a motion to pass ordinance thirty twenty-four with the amendment that the community is allowed to park in that loading zone during the off-hours of the daycare.
So making it Monday through Friday?
Well, I want to phrase it generally enough that the city staff can follow up with the daycare and make sure that it fits their needs. Just in case it's also a weekend daycare, if it is like a Saturday daycare. But is that okay, the way that I made the motion, that generally in off-hours of the daycare?
Yeah, but I I think it means, probably would need to be defined more, wouldn't you? I mean, because who knows what the public just doesn't necessarily know what their hours are. It would have to be on the sign itself.
Right, so that would be up to city staff to find those hours and move it forward in the off-hours.
I think as long as you're clarifying that city staff can do the, just decide on the hours once we talk to the daycare, I think that's fine.
Yeah, okay, so, so the, the motion is to pass ordinance thirty twenty-four with the amendment that the sign would allow for the community or the public to park in that spot during the daycare's off-hours and for the city staff to follow up to determine those times.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion by Newt's and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
So we vote on the amendment first, right, and then we vote on the original motion?
Yeah.
This would be the vote on the amendment, amended motion.
Okay. So I have a
Roll.
Roll call on the amended motion. Thank you.
Vice Chair Schwartz.
For?
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Maybe.
For.
Commissioner News.
For.
Motion carries. Now, do we have to make amendment on the original? I mean.
Nope, you're good.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have to vote on the original now, also? Just thinking how we did it at the planning board.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, yeah, you have to make a motion in the affirmative and then vote it down, I believe.
We vote through the original if we also agree with the amendment. You're on mute, Michael.
Yeah.
In this case, because I think you stated to pass the ordinance, it was really a substitution motion, and I think we're good enough on that.
Okay, sounds good to me, yeah. Thank you. Takes care of ordinances. We have two resolutions tonight. Resolution number five zero zero four, resolution of the City of Livingston, Montana, of its intent to exclude certain land on petition by Kurtson Brown. Mr. Cardis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we're going to share the original staff report with you on this, the picture at least, as we talk about it. And then we'll share some, maybe we'll go to cadastre or something else, so we can all be sure that we know exactly what we're talking about. But this is basically a request to exclude certain land on petition, which in this case really just means deannexing the property. So you can see the property here outlined in light blue. Technically, everything inside that purple boundary is within the city of Livingston. That's basically from the original town site when they did a cross-section lines that section was in. You can see that that is quite a ways from any city infrastructure. At the end of Immigrant Lane there, if you can see it just to the right and down, is actually the last city street and any utilities. So this property is separated by another property and a fairly long lane out. And so they have been asked, they've asked to be excluded from the city or to be deannexed. This area right now is shown as, as medium density residential on the flum. If you reviewed the staff report that Matthew provided, the staff really has no issue with this being deannexed at this time. It is pretty much surrounded by agricultural use or just unused land. And the area will be very difficult to get to with infrastructure, at least in the near future. We would, in the future, if development happened to this area, expect all of the area to be annexed back in at that time, both area north of it, which is currently outside of the city, and the area around it, which, or at least on three sides of it, which is currently in the city. Another factor in this particular property is the Livingston ditch, which runs across there basically right at the end of Immigrant Lane, which will make it difficult to extend utilities in the future. I would not expect any significant development to happen in this parcel just because of the difficulty of access for both utilities and for transportation. It's just not easy to get to. So this is one of those areas that's just kind of been included in the city originally, but probably doesn't make sense to be in the city at this time. I'm actually going to see if, go ahead and stop sharing that one. I'll bring up cadastre just so you can kind of get a better idea of where we are. Hold on just a second. So I can get us into a spot that makes sense. So let me share and then we'll talk a little bit more about it. Okay, so you can see on this map in cadastre a little bit more, I will click the property that we're talking about in this case, so it's highlighted. So there you can go. So you see the property surrounded in blue right now is, is the particular property we're talking about. Up to the northeast is Green Acres. Here's the area along Garnier and Miles that was just annexed into the city. And you can see Bennett Street down here. Again, at the end of N Street or Immigrant Lane here is really the last city infrastructure. Everything from that point on is pretty much just a lane. You can see it's surrounded by agricultural used land, and this property is also between the city infrastructure and the property in question. This property is not undeveloped. It does have a house and it has a large shop on it, but in general, it is not built to city density. It is on a well in septic, and again, this is the end of the city infrastructure, so it would be a significant cost to extend out there. So even if they were to develop, they would probably be exempt from requiring you hook up to sewer and/or water. I think that's all I have for the presentation right now, but I'd be happy to take some questions if you have some clarifying things or you can ask. Matthew reporting as well.
Okay, Commissioner, is any clarifying comments before I open it to the public?
Yeah, I'll ask a couple of questions.
Commissioners.
So this, thank you for keeping the cadastral up. So this, um, lands to the east and the southeast and the south, that's all in the city as well. Okay, I see Matthew shaking his head yes, okay, or nodding, yes, rather. And then Michael, did you say that this has all been in the city of Livingston since the city of Livingston began, basically?
I think it's part of the Minnesota addition, and I'm not sure what year, uh, they did the Minnesota addition, but it's been, yes, it's been a long, long time, um, that it's been in the city.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I heard correctly. That's it for now, I yield.
Any other commissioners? Clarifying comments? All right, at this time, I'll open it, um, public comment to resolution five zero zero four. Any public comment? Last call for public comment on resolution five zero zero four. Okay, public comment is closed. Any commissioner comments?
My group today. I have some comments.
Go ahead, Commissioner Roots.
Um, so I I appreciate the staff report and the information. I don't see the advantage to us in deannexing. Um, it looks like this property is only connected to anywhere by going through city streets, which has been one of our requirement, or one of the things we talked about. In terms of annexing is, um, making sure that residents are paying or individuals or, um, property owners are paying for the infrastructure that they use. And this, this property is only connected through city streets. It doesn't even look like there's any county roads that access it anywhere, um, as well as our first responders. Talking about, that's something we've talked about in the past, is people paying for their fair share. For all the services that they receive, and this is surrounded by cities, so it's difficult to imagine that county would be serving this one parcel when everything is surrounding it, is city. So I, um, at this time, I'm not in favor of deannexation. And that is the only comment I have right now, Quentin. Quentin, you're on mute.
Any other commissioner comments?
Uh, is the property receiving any city services, um, in terms of garbage pickup?
Is not. It's not on, uh, well, I guess it has to be. It has to, I think they're paying for garbage because you have to inside the city, but I do not think that we are currently picking up there. Um, they certainly are not on water or sewer. And they, they technically would receive, um, fire services. I'm sure Earl would also respond in that area. Um, and then ambulance is obviously for the entire county, so everybody in the county gets.
Thank you.
Mel, do you have any, um, comments?
No.
Um. Yeah, I have a couple, um. I kind of agree with the premise that, uh, Commissioner Newt's, uh, I mentioned as well, because we've been, um, annexing this, this whole area, um. Um, a lot of this area in there, and that seeing that it is wholly surrounded by city now. I don't see any, um, upside or to deannexing it at, at this point. Especially the only way to get there is via city streets. And, uh, um. So basically, yeah, um, if they were to develop that, they would have to, um, by, by city standards, um, Mike. Or can they still get away with septic out there if they were to develop it? Um, how would that work?
So while they would be required to, to meet city standards in this case, because they are so far from any city infrastructure, they would most likely get an exemption. And they would just be to replace that, but they're already on septic and well, uh, so it'd be to just replace those. Uh, just as a, just a clarifying, they're not completely surrounded by city. Uh, the north side is outside of the city, so they're only surrounded by city on three sides.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just didn't, I don't want to hinder somebody if they're, they're looking to as per a growth policy, um, to develop it and, uh, you know, for more residential and stuff like that. All right, that's all, only questions I have. Any other questions, commissioners?
Nope.
Do I have a? Resolution again. Do I have a motion on resolution five zero zero four?
I move we, uh, accept resolution five zero zero four.
Second. Have a motion by maybe and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Schwartz?
No.
Commissioner Friedman?
No.
Commissioner maybe?
Yes.
Commissioner News?
No.
Motion fails. Next resolution is resolution number five zero zero five. Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana. Modifying the adopted impact fee schedule to set impact fees for accessory dwelling units. Mr. Curtis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is brought back to you, uh, really in, uh, response to some of the requirements or really some of the desires and goals of the growth policy. When we first brought access, accessory auxiliary dwelling units to you, um, we did so in the attempt to increase density to allow some more, uh, development in the center of the city that still maintained the character and, um, feel of the neighborhoods, uh, so it allowed smaller units behind the current one or ones that are connected or internal to current uh, residential units. So this, while it allowed it, it did nothing to promote it. Uh, so this is an attempt to, uh, provide a way to incentivize the building of accessory dwelling units that, um, that would encourage people to have more of them to meet the goals that we've stated in the growth policy. So basically, what this does is it takes up until this point, our current impact fees are consistent, no matter what you're building, and we've required separate utilities for accessory dwelling units for the need to use. So you would have to pay full impact fees for the accessory dwelling. Uh, in this case, this resolution proposes that we cut those uh, impact fees in half for accessory dwelling units in, um, basically an attempt to spur more development of this type of residential unit in our downtown. So as with most things in the growth policy, this is one of the things that, uh, has a natural tension to it. Uh, people have definitely stated that they want development to pay its own way. However, we also want accessory dwelling units and we want more density downtown, uh, that still maintains a character. Uh, so staff believes that this is the best balance between the two things. Um, it makes it easier to build, uh, what would be affordable housing for people downtown, um, by reducing some of the fees associated with it, while still paying some of their way as far as um, impact on the infrastructure. In general, because of the limitations for accessory dwellings to eight hundred or six hundred feet, depending on how they're, uh, being built. Um, they have less of an impact on the infrastructure than a full, uh, single family unit, depending on how many people reside there. So it really depends more on who resides there and decides. But in general, fewer people reside in the smaller structures. Uh, so there should be less impact. So it really, and if you look on page sixty three, you can really see the, the nuts and bolts of it. Um, it's gonna take average impact fees, and Matthew, correct me if I'm wrong in this, somewhere from about twelve thousand dollars to six thousand dollars. Is, is roughly what you're looking at as far as financial impact. And you can see all the different types of, of residential fees there. And so basically, we just created a separate, um, uh, impact fee schedule for accessory dwelling units that just pays it at fifty percent of the rest of the residential fees. So that means if we change other residential fees, the accessory dwelling unit fees will go up and down based on how we adjust other fees. But overall, they'll pay about half of what a standard residential or multifamily unit, or probably single family in this case. I'm sure that's clear as mud, so feel free to ask questions. Um, anyone who think you can get a good answer.
Sorry, thanks, Michael. Um, any clarifying questions, um, commissioners, before I open it to public comment?
Yeah, I'll ask a question.
Commissioner Roots.
Yeah, Michael or Matthew, I guess, could, could you help explain that chart on page sixty four? I see that it's inches of, I'm guessing it's like water pipes or something, uh, well, and sewer pipes. I think there's probably a lot more listed than any person would reasonably have to connect to their accessory dwelling unit. I can't imagine a ten inch pipe. Can you like? Tell us what it means and like what the average property owner would be looking at?
Sure, that's really just the size of your water meter. Um, and that's what all that's based on. It's, it's diameter of your water meter, because that, that determines how much water can flow into your residence or your commercial building. So almost all the residences in town, I think, are three quarters. Is that right, Matthew? The three quarters?
Okay.
Um, so they're at the lowest end. Uh, really, you, when you're, when you're talking a ten inch meter, that's ginormous. Um, I don't think we have any in town right now. So three quarters is what you see standard for residential.
And that's just from our impact fee. Uh, the chart that we passed a while back, so includes these really large pipes for massive developments, not like, not like a big building development, but like a whole neighborhood or something, right? Like a?
It really is per, per building, so that would be like a massive factory that took a ton of water. Uh, would have a ten inch pipe, it would be ginormous, but, um, in, in general, it is per meter, so it's per dwelling unit or per commercial building and how they're built.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I just didn't want people to think that we were like actually thinking it would cost three quarters of a million dollars for an accessory dwelling unit. So thank you. That's the only question I had, Quentin.
Thanks, Melissa. I'm gonna piggyback off that. So in addition to the impact fees on page sixty three, the water and sewer um, for a three quarter inch would be seven, eight thousand dollars. Um, but reduced by half, so that's four thousand.
That's correct. So just for water and sewer, a standard residential on a three quarters inch meter would be right around, uh, eight thousand dollars. And for now, if passed for an accessory dwelling unit, that would be cut to four thousand dollars.
And then then plus the parks, transportation, fire and police, correct?
Correct, and that's why it averages out close to twelve thousand per a single family unit, and then we'd be cutting that in half to six.
Okay, that's, that's the figure I was looking for. Thank you. Any other clarifying, um, comments, commissioners, before I open it to the public? All right. Open this, uh, resolution number. Missing.
Five thousand and five.
Um, open to the public. But any public comment on five zero zero five? Any public comment? Let's see. Oh.
Yes, Quentin, hi, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie Feigl, one six six Miller Drive. So I was, I'm on the, um, Park County, um, Housing Committee, and I guess my question would be in there, uh, since I don't have it in front of me, I'm not at my office at the moment, so, um, is that only new development? So if somebody were to now take one of their garage units and convert it into a studio, they would have to connect to, uh, all those services with those impact fees. Is that what you're saying, or is this new development?
No, that, yeah, that's correct. It, um, it would be new development because you have to hook up separate sewer and water. So those, those.
So from ground buildup, new development. Not conversion of, per se, the garages and the units that are behind the houses already?
I'm gonna have Matthew answer that. Thank you, Matthew.
I see him nodding, yes.
So anytime you add a dwelling unit to the property, you're gonna pay residential impact fees. So if you're converting a garage, especially if it's a garage that's not hooked up to water and sewer, you're gonna pay all of those impact fees with that conversion. Um, so this would apply to anything. Well, I mean, technically, it's new construction, right? But any addition of a dwelling unit to the property. Um, for example, if you are placing a dwelling unit in a garage that already has water and sewer separate connected, and there's already a meter there, you may not have to pay those water and sewer fees, but it's basically evaluated on a case by case basis. But if you're putting it in a building with no utilities and no services, you're gonna be paying the full impact fees, and we're charging the full fees for that.
Okay, I thank you for clarifying that. So here, here would be my statement then, um, for public comment. Um, you know, looking at the fact that we have many, um, opportunities for studios and low income housing opportunities for some of these dwelling units behind the homes. When you're looking at five to, as what Mike said, what? Five to six thousand dollars for these connections, and then you look at the sewer connections. So what, we're talking close to eleven thousand dollars, even though that's fifty percent of what it would be for a normal, um, house built, uh, stick built. Um, so how, how is that? You know, trying to help the situation that we have, when we have many of the homes that do have these additional units already coming off the alleyways in our downtown city area that are simply looking at renovating them into, say, studios or one bedroom units and doing it appropriately. However, the services can already be tied into the house, and that's what's rolled into your overall rent. Um, I just think that even if, you know, possibility, looking at going to a quarter of the cost, um, uh, you know, if you think about, you know, that's a close to an eleven thousand dollar hookup, not to mention the remodeling costs. So I think that the impact fees, um, this is not Bozeman or any other big city. Um, so I think that, uh, these, these fees are just simply out of control. They need to be, uh, reduced by at least a quarter more. Um, but I thank you guys for listening to me.
Thank you, Leslie. Any other public comment? I don't always see hands, so you can pipe up if you want to make public comment. Okay, see no other hands, public comment? Okay, public comment's closed for resolution five zero zero five. Commissioners? Any comments?
Yeah.
Commissioner News?
Thank you. Can we get clarification from Michael or Matthew on Leslie's comment? Just because I think that she was talking about two different things based on our previous conversations with impact fees. Um, and I think what she's saying actually we're in agreement with in this writing, and I think what she was saying is about tying into the main line is, I'm not sure if that's even an option, so if one of you are able to pick that up and respond to it, that'd be great.
I think, uh, the easiest way to, to talk about it is right now, you're not, you're not allowed to just extend your services from your house to your accessory dwelling. It requires separate services. Uh, and one of the main reasons for that is if in the future that lot is subdivided, then we don't want, um, to have to figure out easements for water and sewer back and forth. Uh, the back property would have to give an easement for sewer to the front property. The front property would have to give an easement from water to the back property. So this just, uh, ensures that every dwelling unit has its own set of, um, utilities. However, the numbers she was talking about, I think we're off a little bit. It's a total of twelve thousand dollars. So for an, a standard accessory dwelling unit is going from twelve thousand to six thousand. So I, I think the quarter she's talking about would bring it close to six thousand. In this case, it's actually the half that brings it close to six thousand. Um, and so for, for every accessory dwelling unit, it has to have its own hookups for water and sewer. And then the, the total fees or the average fees for accessory dwelling unit would be close to six thousand dollars.
Thank you. That's what I was thinking too. I just wanted to make sure, um, it's a confusing topic because there's more than one way that communities do it, and we're trying to do it the long term easiest way. Um, the other thing I was wondering, since we changed that uh, what was allowed for accessory dwelling units, have we had many applications or many properties converting?
Uh, what was allowed for accessory dwelling units? Have we had many applications or many properties converting? To add units to their lots?
Uh, Jim would probably be the right person to ask that question to, but Matthew, do you happen, do you have any conversation with them? Do you know how many we've had?
I think we had permits for a handful, um, not, not a huge number. Um. If I remember correctly, we're somewhere between three to five, um, but I don't know the exact number. Uh, maybe run through the building department. So Jim, Jim or Brad would be the person to ask.
Okay, but it's small enough that it's just a handful. Okay, so I have a couple. Thoughts that I want to share with the commission. So I have heard that this, our, our impact fees are prohibiting some people to add. Units like the ones that Leslie described. So I do think that it's in the community's best interest to think about. Adjusting those impact fees so we can help reach our community vision. Um. The other thing I was thinking, um. Is it would be nice if we could get like a update or something like in six months or a year on. How effective, if this passes, how effective the resolution is or if we need to revisit it again. Otherwise, I think it's a great idea. I think this is how we get to where we're trying to go. So thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other commissioner comments? At this time, I entertain a motion on resolution five zero zero five.
I make a motion, we pass resolution five zero zero five.
Second.
Motion by Friedman and second by maybe. Roll call please.
Vice Chair Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Freeman?
Four.
Commissioner Ramey?
Four.
Commissioner News?
Or.
Motion carries. That brings us to the conclusion of our um items. Uh, there are no action items. So we'll go to city manager comment at this time. Mr. Cardes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have two quick updates for you tonight. Um, one, I know we've talked in past meetings about just keeping you informed on. Uh, the solar array on city hall and how effective it is. Um, while I've. While I provide you some, some information on the electrical generation, which is still, I think we're three months into, three full months into a billing cycles with the solar array. Uh, we have yet to pay for any electric, any electric service. Uh, we've also accumulated uh seven thousand five hundred and twenty kilowatt hours. That we banked with Northwestern Energy, basically that we've produced more than we've used. So we're certainly uh producing a lot. Uh, and that's, and that's, and that's great. Uh, but this is the first month, I think, that we, the other half of that equation that we talked about a little bit, but we didn't really. Um, key in on was how it could save us uh in natural gas costs as well. So comparing this October to last October, at least the billing cycles. Um, just for um comparison sake, the average temperature last year was fifty-eight degrees. The average temperature this year is fifty-nine degrees, so very, very similar. Um, last year during that time period, this building with, I think, less than half the people in it that currently inhabit this one. Use about five point six thermes a day, which is how they measure your usage uh with Northwestern Energy. Uh, this year we're using in the billing month of October, we used one point six thermes a day. Uh, so that's about a seventy-three percent decrease in natural gas use. Um, and while those things don't seem related on the surface, having the solar panel and reductions in natural gas use. One of the things we did is we've set the, set the temperature in the building at a fairly low level, or I'd say it's comfortable for people walking in. And then provide electrical space heaters um with a lot of safety features to all of the employees so that they can keep their work areas at a temperature that's comfortable for them. But that means we're using a lot, a much more electrical heat than we are using natural gas. And that can account for um much of the savings in, in that month. Now we'll see how that works going into some of colder winter months, but so far that's a, I think, a really great. Um, just a really great example of how thinking differently and creatively, um, we can use that solar energy to offset not only electrical costs, but natural gas costs as well. So I thought that was a, some good news to pass on to you. Um, the other item I had to pass on to you is also a good news item, I think. Uh, we just finally have finalized our contract with the state. Uh, Paige sent it over to me. Uh, she helped us. Get the application and get this all set up. So we are now able to take payments for the low income water and wastewater assistance program. So if you're familiar with the low income energy assistance program, which is out there um through HRDC, people can block through HRDC. To get assistance with um heating payments in the winter and they can also actually get uh winterization and weatherization. Um, assistance, uh, which is a really good program. They have expanded that to include water and wastewater. So that means if. You're a qualifying um resident of Livingston, uh, and you qualify for this assistance, if you apply through HRDC, uh, in which you can do in town on Second Street. Um, anytime nine to three, Tuesday through Friday, uh, you can get assistance with water and wastewater. So while the city doesn't run the program, what we've done is we've set ourselves up as a recipient or we've entered into a contract with the state. So if people qualify for the program and they apply through HRDC, uh, the state will make payments on their behalf directly to the city to offset some of the costs of water and wastewater. Uh, the program will actually help people with um. Past due bills and it will also help them with reconnect uh fees if they've been disconnected for uh non-payment. Um, but the qualifications and the, and the sign up for that program is with HRDC, so please contact them. Uh, for more details, uh, and, and be patient with them. This is brand new. It's something that's just out. We were, we made sure that we were uh partnered as soon as we could be for this program. So that's just something, something new that's out there. If you're currently on energy assistance. You will qualify for the wastewater and wastewater assistance. So please get that signed up and then we will be happy to take those payments on your behalf. And it will offset utility bills for residents.
Thank you, Michael. That's great news. Commissioner Notes?
Yeah, that's fantastic news, Michael. Did you, what did you say the thermes went down to for the city hall this year?
It went from five point six to one point six for the October billing cycle.
Okay, thank you. I, um. I think that's really great news. I personally would love to see that story somewhere on our city website. It's such a great example for other communities or other people in the community that are thinking about electrification of their buildings. Um, and how to do it in an incremental way. And I really want to thank you and the city leadership for thinking about that when this building was purchased. Um, it's so relevant and it's a topic that overwhelms a lot of people. So I really appreciate that you're thinking about it and it's safer. It's safer for the workers to work not with methane gas in the building. Um. And. Is that program going to be highlighted somewhere on our website too for people? I hope it's in the newspaper. It's really good.
We are going to send it out. We wanted to announce it tonight and then tomorrow we'll probably do an email blast, put it out on Facebook and get it on the webpage. The only thing I didn't. Uh, included with that, and I'm sorry, is that that it is an emergency program that only lasts through uh twenty twenty-three. Um, so it's a temporary program right now, but uh for people that need it, especially as we come, you know, and continuing in the pandemic, it's a really great assistance program that's out there at least for now.
That's great. And I assume if people have trouble with the website, they can come down to city hall and there'll be staff people to help them navigate. How to do the city side. Is that true?
There's actually nothing to do on the city side. They only need to apply at HRDC. We took care of our part with the state and so it's, HRDC can take care of the rest of it for them.
Awesome. Thank you. I hope people will take advantage. Um, that is something that came up at recently at meetings was this kind of assistance. So I'm glad it exists. Um, the only comment I have that's original tonight is I want to, I want to thank. First of all, all the nurses in our community and the health professionals. I think we're experiencing community-wide a really stressful time during this pandemic. And I just can't imagine the. The endurance that it's taking to work in those professions. And I also wanted to thank our city staff for being quickly adaptable last week when there were some pretty sudden changes. With upticks in numbers, um, to get everything adjusted. Virtually this week and then rescheduling that meeting that was supposed to occur last week. So thanks for taking care of that in a timely fashion. That's all I have tonight. Thanks, everybody. We're back in it. It's not fun. I yield.
Sorry. Thank you, Melissa. Commissioner Maybe?
I just, uh, I'd like to mention one other much less noticeable improvement in the city, uh, much less than the solar panels. And that is uh, next time you go under the underpass, uh, notice that the rotted wood retaining wall has been replaced by. Much stronger looking concrete blocks. Uh, another thing I'd like to mention, a, a little better late than never in terms of the uh impact fee situation. Uh, when you think in terms of return on investment. Uh, given today's rents and future rents and given that. Um, it's an investment of six thousand dollars plus whatever in remodeling is involved. That's not an inordinately great amount of money. Uh, again, given a return on investment in today's uh. Um, economic climate. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Warren. Commissioner Friedman?
Gosh.
Any comments?
Good stuff, good, very good meeting and a good job of the uh that you did. But a lot of good stuff out there. It's all good news. So appreciate that. And I yield.
Thanks, Mel.
Yeah, I have uh. Nothing to add, uh, with the exception of um HRDC's um water and sewer, um. Help, you know, even though it's, it's temporary, maybe it's something that, that can be rolled into um more long-term. Um, it was a question last night at the candidate's forum. And uh, that's great news. Um, other than that, I have nothing. Else to add. Um, except, um, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
On favor?
Hi.
This meeting, the Livingston City Commission is concluded at six thirty-three. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.